Public comments, this is the time in the agenda where we'll take any public comment from any member of the public who wants to address this on the item that is not on the agenda. The agenda today is the Common Core mathematics continued discussion. So if you have a comment on any other item, just walk on up to the lectern over there and let us know. You've got a three-minute timeframe and I think they talk long enough to allow somebody to walk up here. It doesn't look likely. Good. That is the date. Subjective or objective comment if there are no public comments, but we get to move ahead to what we want to do, which is D1, the Common Core mathematics, and I'll call on Assistant Superintendent Taylor.
Well, thank you, President Carr, members of the board, and the public who've come, and teachers and administrators, we greatly appreciate you all being here tonight. I really think this is a momentous night. We have, I have asked numerous partners who are doing the work with me in this very, very difficult area of transitioning the Common Core, and now with the added of keeping the promises of the LCAP. And that keeping the prom, meeting the promises or keeping the promises of the LCAP is hugely important, as we all know. I promise you, I am not going to go over what is the LCFF, what is the LCAP, I'm not going to do any of that, because you guys are very well versed. But what we are going to do is look at four key questions. The first being, how do we assist teachers, administrators with a Common Core standard How do we ensure all students are able to take Common Core state standards-based classes for higher? How do we know what we teach and assess is grade level appropriate? And how do we ensure all students graduate from San Rosa City Schools eligible for college and ready for a career? So, not something new, things that we have talked about, but I really wanted to put a frame around it, because the discussion could go everywhere, the bottom line. So, these are the kind of, these four key questions are what I want myself, as well as the partners that have come today, to address. Thank you both, I think you all remember Patrick Callahan, who came and talked to you about the Common Core. The other folks have gone off somewhere, they'll be back soon, the other partners. So let's dive in. First thing I want to remind everybody of, and of course the board was very, very courageous in taking a look at what the LCAP goals were, which are the first two, and combining it with some very key things that came out of a strategic plan to approve of these four San Rosa City district goals. If I haven't said it enough, I do mean that from my heart, that for our district to take this stand is huge. Now, the difficult part is the implementation of it, the meeting of these goals. So, let's take a look at the LCAP. The brochures are going to be delivered today, if they haven't been delivered. We ordered many in Spanish and many in English, then they'll go out. What I want you to notice, and I know I want the audience to remember as well, is that these are the promises that we have made to the district, to the community. And the, when anybody talks to me about our LCAP, the first thing out of their mouth is, "Are you freaking crazy?" Because we have taken on a huge task. We have recognized where the need is, based on the input from our community, our teachers, administrators, to say, "This is what we need to do in our district." And it's from an elementary standpoint, a secondary standpoint, and then together what the elementary and secondary schools need to do. I do want it noted, this is the other side of the brochure, that this came from the deck. The parents, the teachers, and the community said, "We don't want to read the 48-page LCAP. First of all, we don't understand it. It's in, we just don't, we just don't understand it. What is a way that we can just say, 'This is what we're going to do for the next three years at San Rosa City Schools,' and they came up with it." I'd also like to note that it was a parent who actually owns a graphic design company that did all of this for free for our district. So I think that's to be greatly commended, et cetera, et cetera. Serena Shapiro.
Can we, can we get that parent added to our donation list?
Definitely.
To get an acknowledgement relative to that.
So this is another piece that we haven't talked much about in this format. And this is, if you recognize it, is really RTI or RTI squared. And what we know from our LCAP and our district goals is that we don't just have one triangle to deal with, to work with. We really have three. So this is kind of our RTI on steroids. It's like broken up into specific things for academics, student and family engagement, student wellness and behavior. And so you will see this throughout the year, that we are putting things into each of those triangle little boxes. And it is coming from the elementary, it is coming from the secondary, it's going to talk about what professional development looks like in these areas, and it's also going to talk, look like what do our partners, what are security partners, put into each of these as we work with students, all students, and then determine what students need through assessment and screening to maybe be targeted students through more assessment and screening to determine what do we need to do for those most intensive, few students at the top. So you're going to see a lot of this. Here's the mind blower. Here's the mind blower. So, and Patty was going to do an ice carving, but we thought that might be a little bit much. Patty try it.
Maybe use the three dimension.
Three dimension. And I wish I could, we were going to make things fly in, but what it is, is how do we create, and what we've been using the term as ecosystem, but I'm going to change it to edgy system, just because, I know ecosystem didn't work for me, so edgy system. So this is San Rosa City Schools edgy system, and you can see our four goals around the edge. But there are going to be a series of things, very, very complicated and complex, and I broke it down into three areas: professional development, implementation, and cycle of inquiry. Cycle of inquiry, how I define that is really more just about progress monitoring. It's asking the question, "How are we doing? If we're not doing so well, what do we need to do to change? Re-trying it again, re-implementing," so the cycle of inquiry. To get to the point of the two little beautiful children in the middle, who will graduate when they leave San Rosa City Schools, ready for college and career, with a support, a multi-tiered support system, which were those mountains, and you can see I put them all around, to support them in meeting the goal of graduation, ready for college and career. So just trying to put, and you can see the arrows coming in and out, because that's that cycle of inquiry to check how we're doing. How I want to use this, and I've talked to my team about this, is that anything that we implement, whether it's professional development, whether it's a curriculum, whatever it is into our edgy system, does it meet the four goals? Does it meet the promise of the LCAP? And does it support a multi-systems, multi-system support for students to graduate? I mean, if we, we could, the complexity of what it is we need to do could drive us batty. So trying to focus it, I think, helps all the stakeholders. Instead of this giant thing that we have to tackle called the Biflin and Common Core and the LCAP promises, we're going to be sure that we're on track through this system to hold us accountable, really is how I look at it, hold us accountable. So what are the needs to address our essential, our key questions? I just wanted to change the wording. See, the Common Core implementation and LCAP promise. So I think there's what we're doing tonight, and that's Board of Education training. Okay? I think teacher professional development, we've heard that over and over, not only about the content, but also about the context. What is the content of what we need to professionally develop, and how do we, how is that delivered? So the content. I think that our teachers and our teacher leaders are a huge resource for us, that in training our teacher leaders with professional development helps the entire system. Common Core network is a perfect example of that. Leaders who stepped up to work collaboratively to help move the district forward. And so I think training, and I've heard this from department chairs and other teacher leaders, I haven't had training. I really don't, I don't have a set way of how to be a department chair, for example. And so, let's not let them suffer or try to find out how to do that. Let's actually provide professional development for them, and also build a bench for administrators, administration here. I think that's a piece that we should be doing inside of San Rosa City Schools, but they're going to need some help in order to do that. So, that's another area. Another area that fits in my conglomerate of a square ice sculpture is administrator, both side and district professional development. I've heard from administrators repeatedly that they too want professional development, and that they haven't really been able to get that in a cohesive, coherent way. So I think they're a part of the, a part of the edgy system. Systems that monitor progress, so college and career readiness. And so I think that is also a key piece of what needs to happen in our edgy system, is that we can train the teachers, we can train the board, we can train the administration, we can begin to implement, but how do we monitor that? Both through student progress and the process itself, the system itself.
Diane, your question's on there. This is key for me in terms of--
Is it foolish?
Yeah, in terms of where we're going, and probably one of the most problematic. What's on the horizon in terms of, you know, gathering this data and making it useful? Because it seems to me every time a student moves on in school, maybe there's more communication in elementary school. But secondary, secondary classes, kids come in, it's like you're learning, you're meeting the kid for the first time, takes you six weeks to eight weeks to figure out that they have some skill deficiencies in this area. We were able to monitor that, diagnose that, and push that through and monitor the progress. I think that would be tremendously different than anything we've ever done in the past. How do you do this?
So you have, you've really hit the nail on the head for this one. How do you know the system is working if we're not monitoring the progress? Right?
Exactly.
And we do not currently have a coherent sequential system to do that in the district. That is one of the courageous moves you made in approving the data and assessment position. Because the expectation, and he is full force right now, looking at all the different kinds of assessments we can use to monitor progress, and collaboratively we'll come to some decisions about what that looks like, how do we train, because we have to train everybody, from, you know, instructional assistant all the way to administration. Because any piece of the monitoring puzzle that is not put into place causes, you know, a gap, and then that can't happen, not just for the wide system.
We talk a lot about data, I mean, talk a lot about data. Are there any good models out there right now? Somebody's already ahead of us in doing this?
Any models of--
Collect the data that you're talking about, the system to do this. Are there models out there already?
There are, there are. And we are, what we know is that we want a data system that is, how do I say this? I want to say holistic, but that's not really it. It's really connected to our student information system, our assessment system, they're all connected together. So, because right now, really what our issues are around data is that we have a separate student information system from our assessment and data gathering, and they don't talk so well together. And so it's difficult to get the data that we need. I will say however, with efforts from our IT department, we are getting more data than we used to, and we are getting data that is useful. Are there systems? That's why I rely on the experts of the partners that I've been working with over the last year. I want to know what is the best that's out there. I don't want to do this in isolation. We don't want to do this in isolation. If they, if they have a recommendation, I want to see it in action. And then if I see it in action and we like it, all, you know, the cabinet or the directors, then we bring in the rest of the staff to take a look at it and see what they think about it. Rick is really, actually, we're, I mean, we're about ready to get into that whole process of looking at an assessment, progress monitoring system that will do just what you're saying. We have to know, and I'm calling them pulse checks, we have to take our pulse monthly. We cannot wait with the LCAP for a quarter to go by, a half a year, without knowing exactly where we are. Because if we're off track, we have to change, we have to modify. So, we'll be bringing all that forward, because it's going to probably be a contract. So, let me see. Analysis of current systems in practice, is it working, meeting our LCAP promises and district goals? And so you actually were a fortune teller, because that is exactly what we need to look at as we answer these key questions. Okay? Any other questions? Oh, parent training, parent nights and user-friendly access to user-friendly information. Think this is key, that our parents are asking questions, they're hearing things. We just got done with a math steering committee meeting, and parents are actually bringing, I think maybe slides from board agendas and asking them about it, and what does this mean? And so we're not going to offer pre-calculus anymore. And so Brent Jackson is here, and he's actually leading the way for parent nights, for education of parents. And once we do those, then we'll look at how do we expand it, and maybe offer some different types of parent nights that, where we're there to address those kinds of questions about where's pre-calculus going? And Brent still leads the way on educating parents as a whole. So, not too many things, right? Just a few things to do, to look at. Thank you. So, I want to turn it over to, and I just put some slide-ins, but you can, don't have to use these, they're your slides. But I, based on what you've heard, and what we've talked about, and the rest of the partners in the room too, you saw what our four key questions are, kind of where it looks like we're going to need to have some support and some help. I'm going to have Patrick kind of lead the way in talking about what, first of all, I guess what you think about those key questions in terms of, do they address us meeting the promise of the LCAP and the implementation of the Common Core? And if not, I'm sure you'll tell me otherwise.
Diane, those questions are fine.
Okay, go back there. You're okay?
No, I think this is--
Okay.
So, I guess it was a few months ago, I presented to the board--
And we saw this slide.
And what I wanted to do is, I mean, essentially just do a, you know, a very quick recap, but rather open this up to some discussion, I mean, which is what I think would be much more valuable. As Diane said, we just finished a meeting with the math steering committee. And I think one of the things about that steering committee is that it really is, has been working very hard to develop what I would sort of call a transition plan. And the idea being, that the key idea is that the Common Core is not, for example, adopting a textbook or rearranging some topics in which classes they're being taught. I mean, if that was the case, then, then we could be done. I mean, that would be easy. I think at the heart of those, the first sort of bulleted point there, is that it's important to understand that the Common Core is not just sort of a list of math topics, but rather the very definition of what does it mean for a student to be mathematically proficient has changed. And out of that change in the definition of mathematical proficiency are all the implications of what to do with the courses, what to do with acceleration, what to do with remediation. And this gets back to the four, is it a key or essential question?
Key.
The four key questions. I mean, is, is, you know, it can always be judged relative to, is this making progress towards meeting the promises of the LCAP? So that, you know, at the heart of this is this change in definition. And why this is important is that as a society, students themselves, parents, stakeholders, we have an idea in our head of what mathematics is, and we have an idea in our head of what it means to be good at math. And at least in California, we've had, it's been 15 years since we've changed the definition of the mathematical proficiency. The previous 15 years, if I could sort of paint the lines in characterizing, tended to focus on a fairly narrow set of computational and procedural fluency. I mean, and again, when you think of math, you think about performing calculations. I mean, that's fine. You also think about, you know, solving for x, getting the right answer. None of that has gone away. Rather, I think what's interesting is that in light of what the business community and internationally, 21st century skills is saying that computation is important, but not enough. So, I think the smarter balance assessment actually captures it very succinctly. There are four claims of what students are expected to do, and this is true for all grade levels, it's the same. The first one is the procedures and skills. That's what I think all of us are familiar of. That's sort of what our touchstone, what is math? But the second is problem solving. The second, the third is communicating reasoning, and the fourth is modeling and using data. And I don't think any of those are particularly controversial. I think the idea that a informed citizen, or someone you would want to hire, would be able to, for example, a mathematical model means apply the math that they know to solve real-life problems, to be able to look at some data and make inferences and predictions from that. Problem solving, I think, is an example of something that the business community is looking for. Procedures, I mean, a way of thinking about problem solving is, if you haven't memorized a formula for doing that, in other words, if you're confronted with a situation and you know a formula that you can plug into, that's a skill. If you're presented with a situation and you have to figure out what to do, that's problem solving. And when you think of the type of jobs that are available, and which ones demand one and not the other, I think you see that there's a real differential in the opportunities for students. Communicating reasoning, the third one, is one of the things I think is particularly interesting, is that it's not just mathematics as reasoning, but that if you cannot communicate, in other words, you may know the right answer in your head, but if you can't convince me that you're right, and justify it, and state your assumptions, then that's of limited use. So, all four of these claims are what we expect of students, and that is different than what we have been expecting in the past. I think, to give one example, the second bullet point, was that the old pathways, when you look at a fairly narrow definition of computational fluency, some students are going to be quicker. And as I mentioned, I think at the board meeting, they'll be bored, not challenged. So a natural thing to do is give them more advanced material. And so this resulted over the past 15 years in having more and more, typically at middle school, high school courses being brought down into the middle school, including algebra and even geometry. So two years of high school being put into the middle school in some cases. And that was a rational response to the old definition. The new definition is broader, and in this case, a lot of very rigorous, important mathematics is outlined in the Common Core in the middle school. And the idea of skipping that in order to get to more advanced topics earlier no longer makes sense. And the California Department of Education framework highly encourages thinking very carefully about the old pathways and the old tracks, and look at them in the light of the new definition and increased rigor at the middle school level. This is the type of work and discussion that is being done at the math committee, the steering committee. One of the things about this is that I would say that's half of the story. One of them is understanding these shifts, and understanding and developing a common vision. And this gets back to one of the key questions, is that is, does this vision actually address all four of those points? And once there's agreement, collective agreement on this, that only gets you halfway there because we are where we are now. And so we can have this vision, but then the question is, how do we get from where we are now to there? And I say this because this is probably the, probably one of the points that a lot of the parents, especially of high school and middle school students, is they're already halfway or more down the old pathways. And changing the rules of the game, the stream, have consequences. And so the other half of this work is that we do not want to have any students fall through the cracks. And so we are looking very carefully at having this vision, but then looking at three, possibly five years, where certain classes will be, continue to be offered, and so that no student is sort of denied the opportunities that they thought they were getting along the way. That said, as you start phasing out over a period of years, some of these older courses, there's decisions and branch points there that some of these will no longer be applicable and have to be phased out as well. I mean, there's really no other choice. I mean, you have the set of courses and pathways that exist today, there's a vision of what they could look like, and then the question is, how do you get from A to B? And this is, I mean, we have multiple schools, the capacity, how many teachers, how many different classes, or even, all of those have, it's at that level of detail to really look at what that transition can look like.
What did you hear the math steering department say? Like the key, the key things that you came away with from the math steering committee today?
The key points, well, one of them was a sense of understanding the reality of this expectation. Is this supposed to happen instantaneously? I mean, as in next year, every, all these new courses are online? Who's going to teach those? What are those courses going to look like? Versus, and I think this was something I heard as some level of relief, was that that doesn't, that's not the case. This isn't going to happen overnight. And that really, the decision to be made is how to make this in such a way that we have a set of prioritized goal, what happens this year, what happens in year two, what happens in year three? That always checked against the, sort of the sanity of the teachers, their course load, the students themselves. I think that was one of the big messages. The second one also was the point, the concern that these pathways had in terms of acceleration, in terms of the idea that if, if this claim that middle school in the Common Core is rigorous and important, and is less quote "skippable" than maybe it has in the past, isn't that going to be shutting the doors on students' opportunities to get to AP Calculus or other advanced courses? And this is something, of course, that students and parents care very much about, because that's the touchstone of being able to be competitive and get into universities, especially in the STEM fields. And so this is an example of having a deep understanding of the Common Core. For example, and this was one case as an option, is that pre-calculus, as a course, could be phased out. The critical mathematics that's essential for calculus is actually woven in through grades eight through 11 in the Common Core, which really means that a student could be successful at grade level in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade in the Common Core. So they do not have to skip anything, and they would be well-equipped for AP Calculus. So the idea that that's an option, it has a pathway is there. I think, for example, most parents, the idea, I mean, I don't know why they would even have gone into analyzing which courses were there and how they mapped out or whatnot, but really it's a proxy. What they're really interested in is, is my child going to be able to get into college? Are they going to be well-prepared?
Right, and you, you addressed that a couple, three months ago, and I'm curious if there's anything new in that regard. We asked the question about what, what are admissions committees doing at university levels? Because for all practical purposes, that is what the parent's going to care most about. Is my child, when that sits in front of the admissions committee, say, "Oh, you didn't do this, and you didn't do that," which is the old pathway, and as a result, you're not going to get it.
Right. I, I think as a general rule of thumb, what was true before is true now. If you do well in AP Calculus in high school, you're competitive. I mean, that is a benchmark. And, you know, the Common Core describing three years of high school mathematics leaves the door open. Of course, I like to also point out, you know, not all students are, want to pursue a career in science or engineering. That fourth year is open, for example, a statistics course, I mean, looking at data or some sort of other maybe CTE mathematics course. I mean, the idea that you could still have four years of mathematics, but that last year being a choice depending on what the student, what sort of career or field that student's interested in pursuing. In terms of your question about, in the, in the last two or three months, have universities helped by spreading the word to parents? No.
One of the things I suggested was, well, maybe we need to get somebody up from UC Berkeley in the admissions committee to say, "We're having a parents' night," and this is what's going on.
I was at a, at the County Office of Education here, there was a-- I was at a, at the County Office of Education here, there was a, a meeting where they invited school counselors. And I was one of the speakers, but they also had someone from UC Davis admissions office. And I felt that he, is exactly, I'm agreeing with your point, having someone from the admissions office from UC come and talk about this. And one of the things that came up is, directly, was this idea that, well, you know, it's not enough to just have AP Calculus, I need that, you know, my junior or sophomore year. And I won't do it justice, but he essentially articulated that, you know, the ten-point admissions process looks at a sort of this holistic, purposeful trajectory from the student. And a student that gets to AP Calculus in tenth grade, and then doesn't take math for two years, and then wants to go to UC and become an engineer, is not looked at as better in any way than a student who has reached, taken a sequence of mathematics leading to AP Calculus in twelfth grade. So, I would, I, I have been communicating and working with, for example, the Berkeley STEM Advisory Board. I'm trying to rally the troops at the university, so to speak, to get them to collectively help with this, communicating to parents. They are aware that they're complicit in the sort of arms race that has occurred, and...
They are? They are aware of it?
They are aware. And by "they," I mean, a couple people are. The, well, one of the, one of the sort of interesting things, as you know, at the, at the university level, whereas sort of broadly, the enrollment in AP Calculus has been increasing, whereas simultaneously at the university, the enrollment in remedial math has been increasing. When you talk to university professors, a lot of them say, hey, you know, they're having to retake calculus when they get to the, even if they've had, you know, a three or four on the AP. Students are going to Berkeley retaking calculus. The, there's a joint statement issued by the Mathematics Association of America, which is the professional organization for mathematicians, and the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, that this was a joint position saying that calculus is not the goal of high school. That said, that little paper, I mean, is not really doing a lot to convince parents that they shouldn't go down that pathway. I, I completely understand that. I mean, what would be helpful is to have people from the admissions office, people can talk to the way that this is, and really disabuse some of the myths. For example, more advanced earlier is better. Really, if they look at the eligibility in terms of what is the most rigorous course offered, and you're compared against that, which is one of the arguments, I believe, that came up at our last meeting, is that there's dangers in creating pathways that are accelerated, let's say, by a couple of years or more, in the sense that that really penalizes all the other students. Whereas, individual students have the options of, you know, it's always been the case, they could skip a class. Again, this is the difference between having an institutionalized pathway versus having individualized plans for those students that really are accelerated and benefit from that. So, but in the end, the idea is looking at the data overall, and trying to see what is the most effective in terms of looking at the old assumptions, which informed those courses, and who went into those courses, and comparing that to the new assumptions. The, the last thing I'll sort of say on this, and then open up the floor to discussion, is really that I think we all have to have a very open mind and step back and look very empirically, because what a successful math student looked like before is going to be different. The person that was quick and could shout out the answer, but not be able to explain how they got that, in the past, has been rewarded. And the person that maybe has to use a calculator to do some of the more nasty long division or fractions, but nonetheless can look at data, can make an argument, state assumptions clearly, I mean, this is the sort of more broad definition of mathematical proficiency. And so, that's going to change. I mean, and that's not just as administrators, teachers, the parents, and the students themselves, the students who have been telling themselves, you know, I'm not good at math, or I'm not a math person or something. Those, all of that's going to have to be revisited, so.
Can I just interject on the question you had?
Can you speak up?
Yeah.
What, actually, why don't you, then, just bring some chairs up here. Partners, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Lefortz, and I'm with the Education Trust West Organization in Oakland. We're a nonprofit. And your question about, you know, where do the institutions of higher education stand on Common Core was answered today at the State Board of Education meeting, when a letter from four systems, the UC, the CSU, the community colleges, and the, I'm going to not get this acronym right, the American Independent Colleges, the sort of private colleges, basically said uniformly that they endorse Common Core, and realize that they need to support a coherent implementation at the teacher preparation level, at the course sequence level, and at the assessment level. So, the State Board of Education responded by saying, "Hooray for you, finally coming publicly to make that case," because the public has been potentially confused about where higher ed has stood in relation to Common Core, and this, this announcement is pretty unequivocal about their support. And they're engaged currently in advising the state on what to do around the assessments with cut scores, and whether that's going to signal to a competitive university whether a student, you know, has met the expectation for college readiness for them, and maybe it's different for other institutions. But I, I see now, in today's action, and in the response to that action, that there's a more public affirmation of the value of Common Core and the endorsement of it as a K-16 experience. So, I just thought that might be useful at this point, around that question.
You know, I think that's helpful. And, and I would like us to consider, when we're looking at that bottom one about parent training, what it is that we do in the district at getting that kind of information out, in some sort of a town hall level meeting, that is, that gets to everybody. So that if I've got a third grader in the system, and I'm already looking forward, because we know parents do that, that, that I can understand where that's going. And frankly, if I've got the third grader, I'm going to be in better shape than if I've got the freshman in high school right now, because I'm more worried about the transition. But it'd be nice to address both of those, and to address those in the context of, what does that mean when we fill out the application? Bert, and then Bronn.
I would think also, we look at the internet, and our email systems go out, especially the high schools, and a lot of our schools have many, most of parents, some of them have all the parents on there, and have a very concise statement about what you just said, and a little, you know, little bullet points about easing the fear of the Common Core math. I think it'd be helpful.
Bronn?
Your, your point's really well-taken, though, and I, you know, my experience is that a lot of our students go out of state, and they go to private schools, and so it's not just UC system. And so, we've got a lot of reassurance to do, and a lot of research to do, and I'm sure it's the school district's responsibility to do this. But it just seems to me that parents are going to be, you know, the parents that really care, and have the wherewithal to get their kids to college, and maybe out of state, into some pretty prestigious schools, or, you know, we don't have the answers.
No, I totally get that. That's my own personal situation, I know, one within and one not. And that, you know, that obviously is a big, big question mark, that, you know, I can, I can sense, and that's really why I would love, you know, mine are gone and through, but I know there are a bunch of people that are doing exactly what I was doing in high school right now, and that's what I would want to know.
Other questions?
Other, other, remember questions or comments? You load it up. We've got a whole bunch of folks that can...
Do I have more people than you?
That's right.
I think there's still more out there that need to come up, so, just bring a chair and come on, because, you know, the discussion can go any which way, so. If you guys want to bring your chairs, but come on up. So, yes, you can see I have a number of people here, and I think that, I'll have them introduce themselves and where they're from. It ties to, I'm coming back with this slide, and where the needs appear to be based on, you know, talking to all of our stakeholders, like you know that we do. I'd actually like to have Manny kind of talk, introduce yourselves and what you do, about his work. And it's going to probably lead, I think, right into the other things as well.
Do you have the slides?
I do, I do. Do you know which number you'd like to start on?
Oh, you start with all of them, I just wanted to... So, my name is Manny Barbera. I am currently with the Silicon Valley Education Foundation. I'm a retired superintendent. I was superintendent of the local school district for ten years. And I've sort of flunked retirement, and I've been working at the foundation the last five years. And our, our foundation has this mission to partner with school districts to increase the number of students who are college and career-ready. And we operationally define it as completion of the UC, CSU, A to G requirements. So, just make a quick little note, by the way, of this little conversation. The UC region did send out a letter to all districts last year, saying that they'll accept the integrated Common Core pathway as part of the UC. Having said that, calculus is still a critical course in terms of future careers, especially in the universities, and at the, for science and engineering. So, you just kind of move, I'll go quickly through these. So, this is kind of where our, our main approach is through advocacy. I mentioned A to G. I'm currently coordinating the East Side Alliance. In fact, Patrick spoke to our middle school and high school math teachers just this past year. It is a, an alliance of eight school districts, serving eighty-five thousand students. It's a high school district, and seven partner districts, and we've been formally in place now for the past year. That's kind of been my, my big initiative. And then we also have intervention programs, our Elevate Math, our Elevate Science. The Elevate Math prepares students pre-C Common Core to, for success and proficiency in algebra in eighth grade. Still a very highly predictive course in terms of future success in the Common Core. A little bit in transition area there, but I'll say a little bit about that in just a little bit. And our Elevate Science prepares students for ninth-grade biology, which is traditionally the first lab science in the A to G sequence. So, I'll just skip, there's my advertisement. So, before I go, I want to say something very quickly, tell you a very quick story related to these requirements. When I retired, I was presenting on the A to G requirements in the East Side High School District, where they were, I was working with them, where they were considering adopting the A to G requirements as their default curriculum, which they subsequently did. And when I was presenting to the parents, there was a, presented by Lingoli. I had just retired, and in the audience was a parent, couldn't speak any English, but I knew this parent very well. She'd been in the district since her child was in second grade. I knew this child. He was one of our top students. He was actually going to be taking geometry in that grade. And at the end of the session, we finished, and she came up to me, and we started chatting. And I asked her how her son, Luis, was doing. She said he's doing fine, and she shows me his schedule. And this is, when I look at the schedule, I see he's in steady skills, he's in integrated science. And I said, "Has something happened this past year?" You know, because he's ready to start. In other words, he's going from, my district was Katy, and he's going into a ninth-grade high school. And she goes, "No, no, good student." And I said, "Well, there's something wrong here." It's like, the principal, as I called her over, I said, "Tina, there's something wrong here. I know this kid, and unless something drastic has happened, he should be in Algebra II, should be in Biology, so forth." So, we were able to correct it. My point, though, is that for that to happen, I had to be there presenting, she had to be in the audience, I had to know the family, she stopped to talk to me, and were able to take of it that night. It was August, school was starting the next week. So, our advocacy is that the A to G is adopted as default, which automatically puts a student in A to G courses, and if you could, and so, a lot of times, because we hear, well, college is not for everyone, right? So, I want to keep the student in mind, because this is someone who was going to go to college. In fact, he is, he's at UC San Diego right now. And, and he would have gone, you know, might have gone to, I went to San Jose State, nothing wrong with San Jose State. But his options would have been limited, because if you're going to go to UC San Diego, you have to start right off the bat in ninth grade with those A to G courses. If you take a look at the West Ed research by Neil Finkelstein, it's clear that the A to G path starts in middle school. A lot of times, the high school is too late. Approximately fifty percent of the students are out of the, out of the A to G course sequence by the end of ninth grade. They probably don't even know it, and they're already out of the sequence. And in fact, if you get a failing grade, one failing grade in middle school predicts right away that this is an at-risk child in terms of not only completing A to G, but potentially dropping out. Algebra has been traditionally the gatekeeper. It predicts significantly completion of A to G. It also allowed for that traditional sequence to get into calculus with Common Core, where you are a little bit in a transition period, but the research on that has been really strong. In fact, Neil's most recent research shows that, we know through the Ataman study, and confirmed by Neil, that completion of Algebra II in high school is the single best predictor of future graduation from college, not enrollment, graduating. And Neil Finkelstein's research really showed that four years of math, discrete classes, not repeating the same class, is, predicts whether you're actually going to graduate. Anyone can enroll, like any community college, but you're not going to transfer out unless the sequence is completed. And again, as far as the college is not for everyone, there's nothing wrong with just a rigorous high school education. And then we get to the issue as, who decides, and at one point, is that decision made? We're really talking about, not everyone's going to go to college, we know that, but that, some of these decisions are often made early, and they're made without the student or the parents knowing anything about it. The students who are hurt the most, when they're not, they don't know about the A to G, or it's not default, are families who do not know what the sequence. I mean, I'm an English learner, I did not know the difference between a community college and a four-year college. I was an excellent student, and my choice of college was what's the closest and cheapest one in my house. And somebody to tell me I couldn't graduate from a community college, if you don't know, you know, information really is power and access. And, and whereas the Common Core, so, Mike Curtis is the president of the State Board of Education, he's also in our board of the foundation. And he wrote an article, but the Common Core changes everything, sort of. So, I want to emphasize this, because it does change a lot, but certain things stay in place. Graduation requirements in California remain one of the lowest in the country. So, they're very, very minimum. That has not changed, districts. When I talk to parents, I often ask them two questions at the very beginning. How many of you think that all high school graduation requirements are the same? Most parents think they are, no matter, that they think if you go from one district to another, the requirements are the same. They're not. Boards set those requirements. The second one is, how many of them think that if you get a high school diploma, you're ready for college? Most people think that they're not. You may go to community college, but that's a big difference about whether you're prepared to actually transfer out. The Casey is still in place. Louise Jaffe, I read a magnificent paper, paper I wish I had written, where she actually talks about this, but also talks about the, the California high school exit exam actually being an excellent predictor of A to G, if the students score proficient or advanced. It does predict whether they need remediation going into community college or not. If anyone's interested, I'd be happy to send you a copy of it. The path to college, the A to G requirements have remained the same. So, that, it's, there could be differences within the subject matter in terms of the instructional components that Patrick was talking about, but the course sequence... instructional components that Patrick was talking about, but the core sequence, whether it's traditional Algebra II, Geometry Algebra II, or the integrated sequence, still remains the same. That is still the pathway. There's no other way to get into UC or CSU, and I want to emphasize, that's the minimum. If you're looking at any kind of a elite college, so UCLA, for example, this is a few years back, I don't anticipate there's anything that's changed, the average freshman had completed twenty-four A to G courses. So you can see, you have to get started right away. The length of the school day and the school year has not changed. That has remained the same. Interventions do matter, and for students to, to help catch up, the extended school day, a school year does make a difference, summer programs and so forth, but that has not changed at the state level. And access has remained the same, and this is, there was a report in Santa Clara County called the Held Back Report, excuse me, developed by, written by a civil rights group that really talks about who gets into accelerated pathways and the difference between, and this becomes an equity issue, that students of color, even if they have the same academic achievement, are often the ones who are held back and are not placed in those. So that remains, those still remain in place. One more, I think we're done. This is a very quick study, a case study in Santa Clara County, District A and District B, I won't mention names. So algebra, as I mentioned, is a very strong predictor of future A to G success. And if you take a look, District K and District B, you'll see that District B had algebra in eighth-grade proficiency at forty-four percent, which was really, really high in Santa Clara County. That's actually a very good comparison, that's above, above the state. District A had thirty-eight percent, but when we looked at the A to G completion rate, we saw that District A went up to forty-two percent, District B dropped to thirty-four percent. That did not fit the pattern. So we went to the two districts, and we said, "What's going on here?" And very quickly, I won't bore you with too many details, but what we found out was this. District A was requiring three years of math to graduate. District B only required two, Algebra and Geometry. So what was happening? And if you look at the West Ed research again, a lot of seniors, even if they've completed Algebra and Geometry, they'll take a year off from math. Patrick made the comment about, it doesn't do anyone any good. In fact, not completing math in the senior year also affects the future success in math in college, and Neil found that as well. It's important to take the four years. And what was happening is in the district that was requiring the three years, more seniors were taking, kicking and screaming perhaps, that extra year of math in Algebra II, whereas in the District B, and this was confirmed by the high school principals, a lot of them just simply stopped taking math. Once they completed the, the two years required, they go home, "I'm graduating, I'm going to go to community college," and that was the end of it. And both districts, by the way, have adopted the A to G. The next two slides are for your reference. This is, this is the California landscape. This is the last time you'll see this, because the CST is no longer in place, so this is the last available data. You'll see the number of students, this is one of my favorite little tables here, the percentage of A to G is thirty-eight percent of all students. On the right, you'll see it's disaggregated according to ethnicity, and then so forth down the line, including early assessment results and so forth. So that's California. And the next slide, and Diane, I hope this is the best that we could come up with with the available Santa Rosa results, that from the public available data, the last available data. You'll see all students completing the A to G rate, and these results are below the California average, and you can see the difference between all students and how it breaks down according to ethnicity. You probably have this already, but we thought we would just add this as a matter of information. There's a lot of other information, other slides that we provided as background, but again, our position is we feel that when A to G is minimally the default requirement, policy does matter, and it makes a difference, and especially for the students who are often the least informed, parents who may not know exactly what the rules of the game are. There are rules of the game, information is power, and I liked the discussion that I was hearing about informing the parents, because I think that is a critical component, so.
Questions?
When you talk, when you say A to G, let's say all students twenty-nine percent, are those students that get Ds in classes too?
That is an excellent question. These are students, as reported, that would have to meet the requirements, so Ds would not count. Now, in some districts that require, and I use C as a unified as an example, if they require, if they require A to G to graduate, they allow students to graduate with a D in the course, but that is not acceptable, remember Kristoff, that is not acceptable for UCs. You cannot get a D.
Right, I understand. Excellent question.
Okay, you gave the example of a student who was obviously missed in his program. What would be the A to G math course starting for that student?
For that student would have been, and he was changed, would have been Algebra II. He had taken geometry.
But what is, what would be, say, I'm concerned about the student who is even challenged in math, very, very, so we say, non-proficient.
Of course.
So what A to G math class is taken?
So it would depend. So our advocacy is not to put everyone, this was an exceptional student, right? So our advocacy, even in eighth grade, the research did not show, again, pre-Carbon Core with this huge transition, the research is saying, put everyone in Algebra ready or not. That, there's the Brookin study that, that says, you don't just put kids in just to put them in. What we advocate is, however, assess them so that they're properly placed. And I'll air some dirty laundry from my own district, and this is years ago, where we were looking at who was getting access to Algebra. And what we found out, we corrected it, but what we found out is that there were students who were on the assessments, proficient and advanced, but not placed in Algebra. And when we dug deeper in there, we found out that most of their kids were kids of color. So we had to have a conversation with that with our math.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So let's say you have a district that's running an assessment equally for everybody.
Right.
The assessment determines whether you get into that A to G class. What happens to the other kids?
Well, then there's different, there's different levels. So for example, and again, we're in this transition mode right now, so in the case of, not all the students were placed in Algebra in eighth grade, some were placed in the pre-Algebra in eighth grade.
Is that an A to G class in pre-Algebra?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It is not.
So therefore, what you're saying is that assessing fairly determines.
And the key term, there is fairly, exactly.
Fairly, got it.
It's, it's an equitable assessment, and the key is to place students where they really belong, and, you know, if you look at the research, unfortunately, there's a Steve Waterman study in San Mateo County that found that there were students who should have been placed, for example, in ninth-grade Geometry and were not placed, even though they scored well in the assessments.
Yeah, that's right, obviously. Okay, thank you.
More of any questions or comments?
Any other partners want to say anything to that?
I think the question about, if the standard is the same for all kids, but they don't start off in the same place, then the interventions are what have to vary.
Correct.
Right? So the interventions are, you know, extra time, extra resources, extra support, maybe more effective teachers with that kind of learning challenge, and that is, you know, all part of what people are struggling now and have been to put in place.
Your area is better.
Interventions do matter.
But the standard wouldn't change, because these are, these are national expectations, these are business, you know, community standards and expectations, and when we have people who are starting further behind, you know, we're committed with LCFF to support them and their advancement.
So in our intervention that I mentioned, Elevate Math, we found approximately close to, the students who went through our program, about sixty percent were, and these were kids that would not have gone on to Algebra and Geometry, were able to go into that pathway, so, because of the intervention. So the key is exactly what Janice is talking about, interventions do matter, and that's why I mentioned, you know, with the Common Core, there hasn't been any change in the school day or the school year, so the length of time of instruction has remained the same.
I passed out data. I think our force system might have overheated today, because this was a, this was, this was a lot of data that, I'm very appreciative to Rick Edson and Ken Roberts for putting this together. What I wanted to know, because I've been looking at this, but I really wanted to know specifically the numbers, and I promise you, I'm not going to go through all this, and I'm sorry, it's in the smallest amount ever possible, but if you take a look, what I wanted to know were, how many students were in, are in regular, what we consider regular courses, sometimes called survey courses, and how many are in academic? And for Santa Rosa City Schools, academic is considered to be the A to G courses. Regular is not. Also note that, I just want to say this, I know you know this, but the academic courses are aligned to the standards. And so the question is, for me, when I look at this, is, well, what's the regular courses aligned to? But that's, that's something that we need to explore. So I'm not going to go through each of the grades, you can do that on your own, because I know you will, but just go to the totals, and I've highlighted in yellow, those students in regular courses, okay, and over to the right, so the total is three hundred and nineteen, three thousand, one hundred and nineteen, and those students in academic at six thousand and twenty-nine. So if you do the percentage on that, it's about fifty percent, right? If you go back to the left in the yellow, let's take a look at Latino students, and I have separated out ELD, so it isn't about language, okay? So Latino students, there are one thousand, six hundred and four in regular courses as compared to one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one, let's say, for white students. You go down for academic, there are twenty, two thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine in academic, Latino students, and two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven in, for the white students. So when, okay, so, any questions or thoughts before I?
Yeah, I do have a question. When we talk about ELs in this grouping, is, are we looking at a sub-level that puts in a certain category?
Correct.
What level would that be?
Did he pull three, up to three?
So they're going to be at three, and then they're going to go into academic classes?
Or, you mean, in his data?
I mean, they should be eligible, able to go into an academic.
With support, right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Why, if you break that, so I'm not going to look at grade levels, but I looked at grade level in Latino, and so why are tenth and twelfth very similar, and ninth and eleventh very similar? That doesn't show patterns. That doesn't show change over time. That shows this.
Well, this, this also isn't cohort data. So you could have a twelfth grader who is in an academic class now, who because they were put in a regular class as a ninth grader, are ineligible to apply, right? So this is stagnant snapshot data.
As we are today, just as we are today. This was pooled today, this data was pooled today. You know, I do want to, I do want to say that the school sites' teachers are seeing this, and we are seeing a shift, and in particular, Andy, do you want to talk about your example?
I would love to.
Okay. So this is Andy Lieberman from Elsie Allen High School.
But wait, before, before we finish with that.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
The, the concept of the total, because what you'd like to see is it not have an impact regardless of whether you're Asian, Black, Latino, or white, you'd like to see numbers that are equal. So if you go to the totals.
Or that match the demographics of the district at least.
Yeah, and so if you go to the totals of regular versus A through G, it's about one-third, two-thirds.
Right.
And, and yet, if you look at the total with respect to Latino, it's, you can't get one-third, two-thirds, because the two-thirds, you'd have to be up around thirty-two hundred, so you're seven hundred off, you're a factor of a third off of that amount. But if you go to the ninth graders, you're at one-third, two-thirds. If you go to the eleventh graders, you're almost at one-third, two-thirds, and where you're not is in tenth and twelfth. So I was trying to understand why, you know, why, why that up and down?
I mean, there could be so many, there's so many different.
It's a, you know, it's statistics, it's, you know, just numbers that don't tell you.
It's a snapshot. I wanted, we talk about regular classes and academic classes, you know, we've talked about it a lot since I've been here. I wanted to see actually what it looked like today, if we looked at who was in these classes, and how many students are in these different courses, as, you know, a way to, just another piece of data to look at, are we meeting the goals? Andy?
Okay, so just kind of ironically, I'll put this graph up, I'll go to the graph in just a second. Just, you can leave the graph on there, those are notes for me, but I've got the.
Okay, yeah, I'm just making it.
Ironically, Lori Chamberlain, one of the counselors at Elsie, came up to me this morning and said, "Mr. Lieberman, I need to talk to you about one of my students." And I said, "What's up with your student?" She said, "Well, my student's A through G-ready and wants to apply for college, but they took ninth-grade rag English. What do I need to do?" And I said, "They need to retake it." Now, this is a senior. So at this point, at thirteen years old, with this child and their parents not knowing anything, we said, "Guess what? You're not going to have an opportunity to go to a four-year college." So I want to talk a little bit about, a little bit of history at Elsie. So when I first came, I didn't understand what the whole reg thing was, and my first reaction to it was, "Well, why are we doing that?" Because I thought this could happen to, to students. And yeah, we had some conversations about that. Some of my teachers were concerned, and pulled up some data. One of the things that I, first thing that I saw was that we were talking college to career-ready. We were one of the few schools that had an Avid program, and we had about seven percent of our students in Avid. Generally, you speaking, you would want a minimum of fifteen percent. Now we at four twenty-one. The other thing I pulled up was data on our kids that were in honors classes. So what I found out was traditionally was that if they were Cook and they were in the advanced eighth-grade English, that's how they got into honors. If they were in a regular English class, non-academic, then they went straight into our reg classes or to our, sometimes to our act classes. We had forty-two students the first year I was here, which was 2012, 2013, that were in an honors class. I pulled some data, and there were seventy-five students that had scored three seventy-five or higher on their CST ELA. That's high-level proficient on up to advanced. Several of those kids were not in there because they'd been in the other class. Following school year, rather than using that as a placement methodology, we used predominantly CSTs as well as some of the assessments the district gave to take a look. So what this graph represents, there's three colors there. The light green, as could be expected, these were students who were in, you might want to go down, because this is just numbers, and the bottom wants the percentage, I think the percentage gives a little better. So the light green were students who were in the advanced English VIII, who got put into honors, and that's the grade spread. And as you would expect, because they were advanced students already, you've got, only a few of them were Cs, close to thirty percent with Bs, and sixty percent plus with As. But the one that really caught me was that purple group. That purple group were English VIII students. Many of these students had Ds or Fs in their regular eighth-grade English class, but we looked at some of the data that showed that they scored very high. So we went down, we asked them if they would like an opportunity to go into an honors English class. Most of them said, yes, they would. There was one student who got an F. That student never came to school. And you can see, there's a little higher grade, rate of Ds, but it's twenty percent, and again, these are students who had never had an experience with an advanced class. Cs predominantly, but several, we got thirty percent there who got Bs, and almost ten percent that got As. And again, that's going from the lower class straight into an honors class. Rigor was not dropped, support was added. Rigor was not dropped, support was added. So, we went from having two sections of about forty-two students in our honors class, English class, ninth grade, to having almost seventy-five. This year, again, we have three sections of it. One other thing that we've done the previous year was two of our teachers in English who also felt that they didn't really like the whole reg idea, decided to do a little experiment. And we did two combo classes where we put reg kids in with our act kids. Now, the ratio was higher with act, so, you know, maybe twenty to eight, something like that, it's about twenty-eight kids. Before second semester had come along, both those teachers sat down with me and said, "I can no longer tell the difference between my reg kids and my act kids." And we transferred it and made it a singular act class. Not a single one of those kids who had been reg failed either of those classes. So, we've had a lot of success. The other piece of it, from a master schedule point, is that what happens a lot of times with sheer numbers is, let's just, I'll, I'll make a symbol, but let's say there's fifty kids you want to put in an act class, and there's fifteen or so that are reg kids. So, traditionally, what we'd have is then, we've got these fifteen over here, and then we have a huge class. If you combo it, you can have twenty-five, twenty-five, eight, eight. And the, the, these reg kids get to get the influence of the higher kids. They rise to the occasion. I'm not, I'm not saying that because I'm making it up, I'm saying it because we've been doing it at Elsie. We don't have any reg classes that are, at our, in our school right now. And we're, our failure rate has not dropped. It's, it's, I mean, our failure rate has dropped, our passing rate has not dropped. So, these kids are being successful. Teachers are coming to me and saying, "Wow, I didn't think this was a good idea, but I'm seeing that I have these reg kids all clustered together, and I had no success with them. Now, when I have small groups of reg kids in with my act kids, and they're in the same class, I can't tell them apart anymore." One of the things we saw, looking at this, was a lot of our reg kids were kids who were scoring, just as you mentioned, some of these kids were scoring proficient and advanced on their test scores, but they were problematic in the class. They were behavioral problems. So, they weren't bringing their pencils, they weren't doing their homework. There wasn't a grade necessarily based on the academic ability, the grades were based a lot of times on behavior, based on attendance. So, we weren't saying, "What is their capacity?" We were just saying, "You're a little pain in the eh, and."
We're going to grade you.
"We're going to grade you accordingly." And not only that, but twelve and thirteen-year-old, because you're a little pain in the eh, you don't get to go to college anymore. And I, just, for me personally, that's harsh, and what our data's been showing at Elsie is that change in that culture has made a big impact for us.
And your numbers are up?
Numbers are up.
You need more sections?
We have, we now have three sections, we, we now, we've gone from four sections of Avid to eight sections of Avid. We've gone from two sections of honors, English in both ninth and tenth, to three sections in each. We've added another section of AP. So, our college-career-going culture, one of the ways that you can measure that is, what does your master schedule look like? Does it have lots of lower-end classes, or does it have high-end classes? Research all over says, it doesn't say just increase rigor, it says increase rigor, increase support. All over, whatever you read, says increase rigor, increase support, academic achievement goes up. There's no research I've ever seen anywhere that says decrease rigor and academic achievement goes up.
Claire.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with you when you say those students that are pain in the, should, if they are academic-ready, proficient enough to be academic, they should be academic. And they really should be subject to the rigor, and if they don't bring up to it, they should be able to fail at that level of which they really are at, not put in the regular class where things are not as difficult. Then they're more problematic, and they just coast hard. Agreed. Now, what I would like to take a look at is the rigor level and what is really demanded of those kids in those courses. I think that would be, because what the fear is, is that if you put everyone together and you have kids who can barely write a paragraph, now, I'm, you know, this is a whole different problem with language proficiency, because kids who have, don't have the language proficiency, in their own language can be extremely proficient. So, that's, that's a whole different issue, I mean, pretty much separated, it'd be a difference. But, and I don't really know how to do that, but I mean, Lori and Professor know. But I think the, the idea that what, what is, and I've asked this question as a board member, what is an academic class, and what is a regular class? What, what does that mean? What does the curriculum look like in the regular class versus the academic class? And if you mix them all together, does the curriculum of the academic class stay academic? Or does it come down and so everybody kind of meets as Theodore Seiger said, you know, course is compromised?
Yeah, I can speak to that for this class.
That's, that's the issue with me.
Yeah, I can speak to that for this class, and I had many conversations with Stephanie Moore, who retired last year. Stephanie Moore had a very high level of expectation, and I won't say that this was easy for her.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it was a struggle. There were two struggles that she dealt with. One was because all of a sudden, some of the kids who would have been the high kids in her act classes were now in the honors, so they weren't leading the way as much. So, that was one struggle. And the second was, some of these kids needed more guidance. That comes to where you started, which is your RTI, because what we're doing for an intervention is, let's, let's, let's go to algebra, because we brought up algebra a lot. If you have a student who is struggling in algebra, and you say, "I'm going to stick you into a year-long remedial class to bring up your algebra," then they're in that for a year. Now, there are some students who with three weeks of tutoring, "Oh, I got it."
Yeah.
Boom. There's other students who with months of tutoring don't have it. But then you got to look at, are we having a language issue?
Yeah.
Are we having learning disability issues? There's all sorts of things. So, we need to really be looking at, what is the intervention that's appropriate for each of these kids, rather than just saying, "Oh, they're not making it, so they're in here for a year." That's not an effective intervention. Intervention needs to be a response to what's happening in the moment.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I, I think it's, what we're doing is very complex, I think, and this rover supposedly you're looking at, I think, has some great possibilities. I surely think that closing the door on a student early on is the wrong thing to do. I, I think that, you know, we know that we don't want to tell somebody, "You're not going to make or you can't make it." I want to be real with the kids, too. This is why the data becomes very, very important, because if we're not providing the right interventions, then we're doing the student a disservice. And I can tell you anecdotally, I've had a couple of years where I taught, where I had non-track classes. And I started my career with a ninth grade English class. And I had two gals in there that were at the thirteenth grade level in English, and one was at the thirteenth grade level in Spanish. I had a young man that was at second grade reading level. I had another young man that didn't even register. The class worked very well. There were only a couple of other kids that were below grade level in their ability, but I had twenty-eight in the class. I had a full-time aide in the class. I had a budget, and was allowed to buy individualized reading materials, and had a program, was individualized, had a lot of financial support. And I had a couple of part-time volunteers in the class, too, from Sonoma State. I don't think we had a, you know, we did the diagnostic, we did a lot of diagnostic back end, not as sophisticated as it is now. But the difference is, now we've got classes with thirty-five in it. We've got kids that are all over the board, have real specific language problems, even within a second language learner, there's, there's a lot of issues. So, when we talk about doing this kind of stuff, we're not just talking about a couple simple interventions, we're talking about stuff that's extremely complex. We're talking about a lot more resources than I can see that we have in the near future. You know, how do we get our classes down to a manageable size, for example? Just one, one of those issues. So, the idea is wonderful, but the practicality of it, to me, is, is beyond my imagination right now.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So. Is there any comment from anybody with respect to Ron's?
I think I can comment to.
Otherwise, I'll move on to the next one.
Well, I, I just want to say it's important, I think, and I think you hear that from a lot of people who enter Santa Rosa City Schools from experiences other places, the normalizing of regular classes and academic classes, this artificial bifurcation, is not a normal practice throughout the state. The solution we created with the complexity in our class is not something that's done in most classes. Your grade level standards are your grade level standards, that's what's entered to UC, and it's A through G approved. So, this idea that instead of figuring out those complex problems and putting students in academic-only classes and then leveling up, we've leveled down. And that just, that leveling down by creating a whole separate category of non-college-going possibility classes isn't a normal institutional solution that's proposed. So, I, I just want to make sure we understand that it is different. That's why our data, when you look at it compared to the state average, is so different, because we have solved this problem in a totally different way than many systems. So, not talking about the individual student who can't do a paragraph, because every school across the state has them, right? But as a system, our solution has been create a whole level of classes that, your question about what's the difference, that's one of our questions. How, what are we teaching in ninth grade English if we are not teaching the ninth grade English standards? Because there are adopted standards in our state. So, I think it's a, a great question, but I think what we have to look at is, how do we change our system's response and build the capacity in our teachers and, and all of that? Because this isn't the nuances of three years of math or four years of math, this is the freshman class that they're offered. That's where our problem begins, and that is, that is policy, that is a structure we have created on purpose, and we're seeing the data.
And I think it feeds even deeper, it's, it really begins, we could say, at the seventh grade, and then we could say, really, it can go back to that third grade reading level, you know, and attendance, and so, yeah.
Yeah, well, again, just looking at that graph, I had sixty-seven percent of those kids that we put in that program that didn't get patted otherwise are now A through G compliant. And the other third of them that aren't A through G compliant would have been anyway. So, that's the first thing. And the second thing, as far as numbers go, again, when you have, the, the more specialized classes you have within a master schedule, then you end up with skewed numbers. So, if you have ten kids that would be reg, and you have thirty-five kids that wouldn't be, that means you have a class with ten and a class with thirty-five, as opposed to forty-five divided in half, and you've got two classes with twenty-two, which gives the teacher the ability to focus on some of those more difficult kids and have more targeted intervention within the classroom. So, you can actually drop classroom sizes when you get rid of these multi-levels. These multi-levels clog up the master schedule to the point where it's, it's difficult to maneuver.
And we have made choices on class sizes, only we've only done it for academic kids, because we run small class sizes all the time in our most advanced classes. And we have had no problem for years with that, offering that opportunity.
Right.
So, I think, you know, we have looked at class size and made decisions along the way, I think.
Yeah, I just want to also, one of the things, I think, that underscoring this is this idea, especially in mathematics, where a solution has been to move kids up or down. So, you're in ninth grade, and you take eighth grade math, or you're in ninth grade, and you're taking eleven, you know, all these sort of, the, what's interesting is that the, the common core really is intended to be, that's what the mathematics should be at grade level. The Smarter Balance Assessment, you take that in seventh grade and eighth grade, it doesn't matter what math class you're in. If you're in eighth grade, you take the eighth grade Smarter Balance Assessment. So, there's some concerns that some districts are having, if their eighth graders are taking honors geometry, they're not going to be tested in honors geometry, they'll be tested in eighth grade standards.
That's a great point.
So, I think in, even in terms of the external accountability system, it's trying to put pressure on this, what you call this bifurcation, or even, you know.
Well, in math, it's like.
Yeah, bi wasn't.
Yeah.
Try.
So, I just, it just, I'm confused over having this conversation, because I kind of feel like we've already approved the LCAP, and our district goals are to prepare our students for college and career. And so, it just seems like we're misleading our students if we're not preparing them by giving them the A through G, making that a requirement, because we've already approved the LCAP, and we're already at the elementary level. I know I really sold that college and career readiness culture, and it's been approved by the board, and so I just feel like we're misleading our constituents if we're not providing the A through G, the expectation.
Jen Miller.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit along the same lines, I mean, sometimes I'm frustrated that we're having a debate that isn't totally based on facts, because we have, there's an overwhelming amount of research that I just read as, you know, ready to, as education professional, but it's the interest in education that shows that if you raise expectations and you raise support, then academic achievement goes up, and it's, you know, it, there's nothing that says anything different. And then, right here in our district, you know, Mr. Lieberman comes in and says, "This is what I did, this is what we did at our school," and it, you know, mirrors that research, and so, it's, I don't understand the disbelief, the nonbelievers. And I, and I think that distracts us and slows us down and distracts from what we decided our goal were. So, you know, I, I wish that when we were having that conversation, we were talking more specifically about, "Well, what did you do, Andy, so that we can replicate it? What were those interventions? Because you did have success. I am believing you that you had success, that you're showing us in the graph. And let's talk about how we can, we can make that happen at Piner and Montgomery and, and for the little kids that.
Montgomery actually collapsed their science, so they only have academic or above sciences that are going.
I just want to say, though, publicly, too, that this isn't easy work, right? That it required, right, I mean, there's the policy level, but then there's also the practical in the room, and we do have, you know, we have technology issues, we have placement issues, we have scheduling issues, and so, the whole system needs to turn to support the classroom and the instructor in the classroom, and make sure that they feel confident, they have everything they need, they have the tools they need, and that from the beginning is as smooth as it can be, so their instructional focus isn't interrupted. So, I don't want to oversell, like, it's, it's a magic wand, that if we only labeled it something differently, like, in twelfth grade, there's going to be a magic unicorn in it. It really is a whole systems issue that starts at a much younger level, and I just want to acknowledge that for everybody. I mean, this will, this is hard work.
Hence, all the people, because it's that complex.
Claire. I want to, go ahead. Manny, you have a good follow-up on that?
I was going to follow, there's, there's two things I think that are really important. First of all, the superintendent, this is systemic issue. This is not, you know, it's, it's, the entire system needs to be looked at, but I think it's a principle, you're right, that's made the, huh? But I think, if you can encapsulate this whole evening, I think you said something that I think really resonated, which is, there is absolutely no research that supports lowering rigor improves student performance, but increasing rigor with support does. And I think that's really what we're, well, you're talking about, you're the decision that you need to make. And I think if there, if, if there's one thing that summarizes this evening, and for me, that statement, that it's systemic, and that the research is really clear, increasing rigor with support is what's going to be the difference.
I agree with Jen. And so, that's why I'm questioning the rigor of the academic course at Elsie Allen. And secondly, to answer Jen's question, and willing to address or perhaps elaborate on what Ron was talking about, and I'm putting my shoes in the, my feet in the shoes of a English teacher, because that's where I taught for thirty-six years, thirty-three years in secondary. So, in a, what we call an academic course, it might have four to five novels taught, core works, and a lot of things around that, creative writing, ending with an essay, you know, a film, speakers, et cetera. You would ask the students to read a hundred pages of Scarlet Letter, Grapes of Wrath in nineteen eighty-four, these, these great works of literature, on their own outside of class. these great works of literature, on their own outside of class. Okay, now, if, you know, when I taught a regular course, I would have works that I felt the students, because their reading level, they were tested, they weren't reading as well, they weren't writing as well. And I would have books, they had to read outside of class also, and, but they were easier to read. I taught the same standard. Perhaps you could have taught, perhaps my class could have been academic. Now, in mathematics, you said, of course, that student who cannot achieve, you know, the rigor of algebra is going to be put into pre-algebra class. Or a different, a different, wouldn't be, what would happen to that student?
Well, that's one of the questions that we're having. I mean, in, in the past, a lot of students have been, they take an algebra test, they fail, they go into a different track, which, as mentioned, is now below grade level and in some cases, in many cases, not A through G. And so these students are pretty, pretty much.
In the beginning of course.
Yeah, and they keep failing.
The, the, the argument is that the defaults in, for a student in eighth grade is they take eighth grade Common Core, in ninth grade, they take ninth grade Common Core. In fact, I'm using those labels because I think, you know, when we were calling it Algebra I, this is a course that some seventh graders take and some 11th graders take. I would rather shift the emphasis and say, in eighth grade, with, you know, individual exceptions, an eighth grader takes eighth grade Common Core math. In ninth grade, they take ninth grade Common Core math. And the student who is struggling in ninth grade Common Core math in ninth grade doesn't get shunted into an eighth grade class, but they get an intervention and support to the extent possible. So that's, that's the model that's being proposed.
Okay. And it's a, it's a, it's a worthy novel and, or model and I don't know how it would work in math, whether you can catch a kid up that fast to be able to take the next year's Common Core class. That's, that's what basically tracking has been all about. And your examples are, are, you know, are noteworthy. Everybody should have a fair shot. Now, on the English, I would think if you, and I have taught some hetero classes, you basically, I think, have to have, you can't ask everybody to read a novel that they aren't able to read because they don't have the reading ability. You're going to have to have several groups in each class. And then you're going to have five classes of English and it's a practical matter. You're going to be juggling 15 books to perhaps, you know, in a, in a week or, you know, three or four groups in each class, say three. So that's, those are, those are skills that would have to be learned and, and dealt with and, and see if they're received. So those are my concerns. Nobody wants to give, to shut a kid out of college that would have a chance for college and especially that student that was misprogrammed. And maybe to look to add a, add a, add it at another light too. I think it's associated, I'd like to see this also translated into low income, which kids are low income, which kids are not. I think that might give us a clue too.
I think I follow up something Superintendent Shields said a little bit ago and that this is not, you just come in and do it. So when I throw this data up here and show this and talk about what we did, I want to make it really, really clear that we just, did just go and say, let's just take all the REG kids and throw them in, okay? There've been a lot of changes at LC, starting with what is our vision? And coming up with a vision that says, we want to support and inspire learning and a success. We're a family that supports and inspires learning and success. And that's where we started. We said, everything's going to be about that. And then what was our focus? Our focus, very coincidentally in doing that, our strategic plan, pretty well mirrored the strategic plan that the district's come up with. So we've built times for, instead of just having Mondays after school, our ninth grade English teachers have a Common Prep, our 10th grade English teachers have a Common Prep. We have levels so that we have honors next to our ACT class so that if a kid here might be higher, they can go up. And it's a vertical transition without affecting their schedule.
Great.
We've had lots and lots of conversations about what do I do with little Johnny who comes in and I've got him in an ACT and he's not a regular and he has difficulty reading. We have teachers talking about, instead of having my class, we have, we are the freshman teaching group. They are starting to collaborate and move kids around. They're building interventions into the day. So the point is, we as a school and as a culture decided, we want to be college and career and we did not believe that REG felt fit into that. So then the next step is, if we're going to remove it, what are we going to do to replace it to make it effective? So this is still a work in progress. But again, the data shows that we have not increased a level of failure. We have not increased the level of, you know, the test scores have not dropped through this.
I would also think if that's a staff decision, that would be something.
Well, again, that, that we, we started with that. It's, it's, it's a cultural shift. What do we want? Where do we want our kids to be? What is our real educational philosophy? What do we believe about kids? Also, on that side of town, you've got to realize that these kids, their chances of going to college go way, way, way down because they don't come for money. Their parents have a sixth grade education, if that. Their parents don't speak English. If you want to have a conversation with them and you don't speak Spanish, which a lot of our staff don't, the kids translate and they say to parents whatever they want to say. So we have to, 90% of them. So we, we have to look at it differently because again, those parents are not going to fight for those kids to go to college and those kids don't know what a college is. So if we don't say, when you walk in our door, we are going to, my counselors set up, every single freshman is put in an A through G course. Now, they might by junior year, maybe they're not in that A through G anymore because they haven't made it and we haven't come up with enough interventions, but by a garden, by, you know, when they come in, they're going to be in art, they're going to be in a foreign language. If we think they can handle it, they're going to be an avid. So our expectation, when they say, well, I'm just going to go to the JC, the answer is, then your senior year, if you want to go to the JC, you decide. And you decide then, not because you have to go, but because you're making a choice and you are still A through G ready. Am I saying every 100% of our kids will be A through G? Of course not. But that's the message they get from the minute they walk through our door.
The achievement gap is not created equal. The achievement gap accelerates students certain times during a student's school career. It goes from middle school, because from the elementary to middle school transition is when it starts, and when it gets to high school, it starts to explode. And a lot of it has to do because of exactly what we're talking about here. Your point, which is, are you?
Bill, Larry.
Okay, so the, the point you made when you were talking about your class triggered something for me that's recently been validated in some research. I have twin boys. They're both teachers now in their 30s, but at the time when they were in high school, I made a mistake one year and I let one of them talk me out, taking an AP class. And exactly what you're talking about. The one had to read seven, eight books before the class even started. The next year, I went to the teacher and I said, I want to, I'd rather get a C from you than a B from somebody else. Because the rigor, sometimes we get caught up in the grades and you got a C, but that's fine. But Pace recently put out a, a study on this very issue, that students who, even students who take AP classes, even though they don't necessarily pass the AP test at the end, learn more.
Agreed.
And I think sometimes we get so focused on the grade, we forget that learning is the key. You know that as a former English teacher. You're exposed to, even if I sit there and I can't read a lick, just the conversation and discussion is going to raise me. And, and I think the same thing applies for math. We just spent two hours with Phil Darrow just this, this past, last week. And, and the point that he was making on this very issue is, the best kind of support is to front load this kind of support for students, but not to de-rig or, I don't know, you know, to, to dumb it down. We're not talking about dumb it down, but, but make it rigorous, but give that kind of support because they will learn more.
Don't you think, or what does the research say about, you know, we know the effect of not having preschool, we know the effect of low income when they come in, we know the effect of not having summer programs or after-school programs and that each year, if they're not in a summer school, if they're low income, the gap increases where you have really, by the fifth grade, you have three years difference in, in, in the gap in reading. And that's really where it starts.
But then what we do is we greatly contribute to it. That, that's kind of the point, is that once this process starts, they can never catch up. And, and I mean, we need to, you know, I, I think you're bringing up a point. The school system can't be responsible for every single thing in society and the poverty that exists there. And I think it's unfair to lay it all on education to take care of it all in some, because it gets everyone else off the hook. But we do make a difference though. Policy, get back to the superintendent's point. Policy does make a difference and this is where it makes a difference. That exposure to increased rigor makes a difference. What we do know is this, if you put them in a, in a class of increased rigor, that, you know, it's, not everyone's going to be successful, but what we do know, get back to your point, if you lower the rigor, there's no chance.
Yeah. Fine.
I have a couple of things that I agree with you very much on. We can't be, you know, solving the problem of poverty in America and discrimination by ourselves. I just think the practical side of all this, you know, LC Allen is a community, Montgomery High School is a community, Maria Creo is a community. I think our, this conversation should be taking place at each of our sites with parents and students and teachers as well. I think whatever, how we, how we group, it really has to do with what's the best way to deliver education to those kids. And, you know, again, without lowering expectations, without lowering standards, whatever we come up with, I think is going to be, it's not going to be one size for me, fits all because our communities are very different. I would take issue with the fact that, that algebra two is, is, is the gateway to college success. Studies I've read, and I've read quite a bit about this lately, has to do with the income level, the economic security you take with you to college. So I see a lot of our kids here that are going to go to the JC or are going to be eligible for college, but because they don't have sustained economic support at home, they're going to have a difficult time. They're going to drop out. This is why I launched the program at San Jose State because they not only have counseling, our San Jose State University program is, is for me, the future, if we're really going to, you know, do these kids a service. Again, interventions that are new, but really tremendously expensive and broad. The other issue I've talked about, again, and I've said this before publicly and written about it, is summer learning loss. It's not, you know, the interventions that we're talking about, a lot of this is going to have to take place in the summer because that gap, that gap not only widens, but for certain groups of kids that don't have access to summer programs. So when we look at this, again, we're talking about programs that we're going to have to implement and we're going to have to, you know, really finance, you know, finance these programs to, to combat some of these things that are going on. But I would agree that achievement gap grows greatly over a few year period. And so anyway, we've got a lot to do, a lot to talk about and I would like to see us take this conversation back to our teachers and parents and broaden it out, you know, this is a good starting point for me.
I think that, I, I, I appreciate that. I think that what we see and what came out of the LCAP and the strategic plan, to me, very, very clearly states that parents, the community, parents in particular, over and over again, want their students to be college and career ready. And so taking a step further and getting more down, you know, deeper down into the conversation, definitely. I mean, we know we've built a collaborative community in Santa Rosa City Schools and we'll continue to do that. But I think that it's been clearly stated by our community, what they want for their kids. I think as a board, you picked those four goals. And so I think as a board, I hear, I've heard since I've been here my whole year, my whole one year here, a little over a year here, varying degrees, varying conversations about this subject, whether it be A through G, academic or regular. And I appreciate that you want to hear from your constituents, the people out there. I would say you have heard from them. And I would say, as a board that leads the district, that, you know, your, your leaders of the district that developed the policy, when we talk about the resources, when we talk about equity, which we haven't even got to yet, because a lot of this is shaded with equity. Are we equitably distributing resources? Okay. Again, we haven't got to that point. But I, I really feel as a board, as an assistant superintendent, I look to you, to what do you believe? What do you believe every student in this district should achieve when they graduate?
Well, I think you already said it. We have a strategic plan that already is set in. We've got an LCAP that already is set in.
Are you guys?
We have elementary principals that say, hey, we're already focused on that and we're going that direction.
Yeah.
That's where we are.
We, so you all are in agreement as to.
Let's do it.
What it means to be, to achieve those four goals and the promises of the LCAP.
I'm not sure what you're asking, to be honest.
I guess, oh, okay, okay.
No, I think, well, first of all, when you say.
I can say it, but I'll.
The board, I mean, I think you're, that the board voted on the LCAP and the board voted on the strategic plan and approved it. And I, this, you, you know, you guys, the staff has been out to the community for a year straight, the strategic planning process and the LCAP. Like this has all been vetted all over. I don't know, a district has done more, you know, and has sat down with the community more in, you know, in the last year or two. And so, I mean, I think that's done and that it's time to, to move forward and talk about implementation in here about, you know, what you guys need in order to implement the goals that we've already voted on and approved and what we need to do to support that. But I did want to, I, I was just thinking, I kind of wanted to point something out, you know, there's, this is just a comment. There's all kinds of debate all the time about where education, public education in the United States ranks, you know, with other countries. K-12, but there's really no argument about who has the best higher education in the world. Hands down, that's the United States. And, and I've been to several schools, including the JC down the road, and there's a range of kids, students, abilities and training and, and income level, et cetera, in, in every school, but they don't change the requirements for any student. But what they do have is they have TA sessions and study sessions and they have intervention. And, and that's how our higher education, which is unmatched, how it operates. And in fact, at the, at, and I just look, I, I thought I was right about this, but I didn't know for sure, so I just kind of verified. At, at the hardest learning institutions, things, you know, consider the, the top learning institutions, they have the highest graduation rates. And it's not because it's easy, it's because they have lots of money and they, and they, but they have lots of interventions. They're not going to let people slip through the cracks. And, you know, if you do, and, you know, Andy, you said, you know, that you're going to lose some kids. And I think, nobody in this room ever wants to admit that they're going to lose some kids, but we're going to lose some kids. But are we going to lose some kids from, from the hi, from the highest level of expectation? Or are we going to shoot for the middle and lose some kids from the middle? And how, how best are we steering our students?
Let's just say one more thing about the REG classes and pulling up data, and I should have pulled some of that, but in pulling up data, the, the two years prior that we had REG classes, the failure rates in those classes were abysmal. And the whole idea of having this class was, okay, these kids are low, so let's lower the expectations so that it's easier so they don't fail. Well, they were failing like crazy.
They give up hope.
Well, I would guess that there were more behavioral problems.
And more behavior. Part of the reason they were failing is they weren't coming to school. And if they were coming to school, they were getting in trouble because there's 10 of them who were behavioral problems all lumped together, so they're getting kicked down in the room and they're getting suspended, so they're not at school. And so they're either leaving out because of attendance issues or because, well, either on suspension or not choosing not to pay those attendance issues.
I think it's important to note too, that when we talk about how we're going to address these issues, because we do have to move forward, the board has voted, we have turned in that LCAP, we do have to talk about a plan, that we are not thinking that there's going to be a silver bullet. We are not thinking that people in some room downstairs at the district office are going to do that alone. We definitely know that we have intelligent, capable staff who are committed to finding solutions, who need to, one, get out there and see what other people are doing, see what types of tools and materials there are, and see what types of training has to happen across the board, not these pockets of excellence or pockets of innovation, but what are the minimums that everybody has to have in this day and age? Because a whole decade of training has skipped over this area. I mean, we are behind. And so what does that need to look like and how do we get current? And how do we do that together using the bright minds that we have? Because we have people. Because we have people ready and willing and excited to problem solve in our classrooms, given the structure to do so, the structure and the support.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I wanna compliment Andy and Elsie Allen for the teachers meeting together and looking at the problem and implementing some solution. I think we give that problem to our teachers. It would be arrogant for me to decide whether we're gonna keep or eliminate tracking. I think it's up to the sites to have that discussion and see what is best for kids, knowing what we stand for. We stand for equity and we stand for fairness. We stand for rigor. And we gotta keep both.
But I wonder if the question isn't whether you keep or eliminate tracking, but how do we support the students we have to achieve? Right? Because the board has already said, college and career ready, which you I mean, and I think that, yeah, the outfit in the room is you can't be both. You can't be college and career ready and support regular classes at night. It's inconceivable. As a system, as an organization, not as any one individual, not as any one decision maker, but as a system, they are incompatible.
Can I just say something about having regular level classes? I'm from Montgomery High School. We have the IB program all the way down to regular level. What, or if that's your vice principal?
You have the IB at regular level?
No, we have IB all the way down to regular level. Okay? What I see is, in the chase for getting a good grade, I see perfectly capable students coming to me saying, the work is too hard in my academic class. I wanna go down to the regular or survey level. And it's absolute heartbreak to watch that happen and then have parents support it because it's there. And I have no option but to let because they're gonna come and see you guys. I have a special ed background. I have been at schools where it's been full inclusion. My last year teaching, I had a young lady who was the first Hispanic and lady, who was the first student in her household of eight to graduate high school. Not only did she graduate high school, she was fully included except for a directed study class. She had the highest grade in her academic English class out of all the kids that that 12th grade English teacher taught. So when you raise the expectations, students will meet them. They will rise up and they will meet them. And I believe that from the bottom of my heart. I've seen it too many times.
Do you wanna move to equity?
Sure.
Let's see a slide.
Yes, you do. So I'd like Jeanette LaMores to trade seats and then, would you like to come on? Because as we said, this is about equity. It is one of our goals and so so many places to dive in.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having us here today. My name again is Jeanette LaMores and I'm the Director of Equity Initiatives at the Education Trust West. And I'm joined with some colleagues from the National Equity Project.
Good evening. My name is LaShawn Luton Chapman. I'm the Executive Director of the National Equity Project. And I'm here tonight with my colleagues in the Director of the National Equity Project.
So there's lots of ways that to do this conversation, but I wanna start with the students because we've referenced them a number of times. And we've also talked about what access, we're accessing, you know, A to G and being eligible and what that really means. This particular quote from a young man in San Jose was, I think, poignant for me in terms of, he didn't understand at one point that there were certain doors and windows that were available to him. But because there was a default curriculum around A to G through the work of one of our senior advisors at EdTrust West, former Superintendent Linda Murray, he saw that he was college material and no door was closed to him. And when we engage with a district partner, we speak with students, we speak with teachers, we speak with counselors, we speak with administrators, we speak with parents, we speak with community members. And they all want to maximize the options that any one individual student has at the end of their high school career. And maximizing those options includes, you know, having a four-year college opportunity for many of them. And just as I think you mentioned.
Andy?
Andy, you know, if you choose to take on something else, that's great, you had a choice, right? You had a choice. So we are committed to a process of engagement in the partnership that we have with National Equity Project and EdTrust West. And we've worked with Silicon Valley Education Foundation to help a community making a commitment and already committed to equity to unpack the experiences of students, understand the journey that they're taking through high school, but even before high school, because we've described it starts before high school, to understand what is supporting them and what's getting in their way. What are the barriers that they're encountering? And what are the supports that are, you know, in place for many kids, but perhaps not all kids and not all kids who need them? So we, let me just go to the next slide. We've worked with 12 different districts across the state over the last decade. And what we find is that communities who are committed to this dialogue, this discourse, this set of principles and a process of figuring out what they concretely need to do to make their goal actualizable, can get there. And what this shows is that in districts with whom we've worked and partnered, they have seen a 9% increase in their A to G eligibility rates compared to where the average state increase over the past five years has been. And because we're especially concerned with students who have been disproportionately disadvantaged, we see that they're also seeing a greater increase in impact from this process. And it's an engagement process, not people coming and telling you what to do. It's more of a guide and a structured facilitated conversation. I mean, Patrick has to catch a flight. And so I'm gonna let him, let him go.
Yes.
If there's any final questions.
But I'll be back.
You and Arnold Schwarzenegger, right?
The mathematics is not going away.
And I'll just mention that these statistics are inclusive of districts that are in the middle of their execution of plans that they made with facilitation supported by our work. So we're not even seeing the whole impact here in this graph because the graduating class for whom this work would first fully impact hasn't necessarily been calculated for some districts. So we just wanted to show you that we're committed to supporting your goals and we see that we've been able to support some other districts around.
If I could just support you, I think you even know this, but we partnered with EdTrust West with Eastside Adopted A to G. We did the audit analysis and the San Onofre County, the percentage of A to G, students completing A to G went up by 1% in the entire county, large county, 260,000 students, all because Eastside went up 3%. And that's before the full impact with the audit. So because the district is so large, it's 25,000 high school students. Because they went up 3% with the entire county. And I attribute it based on the policy and the process.
And it's not that we're doing the work. It's that we're helping people see clearly the experiences of the students that you have. And we're using some analytical tools and facilitated conversations to get at that. So we do have a set of processes to help you look at, well, what is the access that students have to the A to G courses? And most student information systems don't crank out the analysis that we're able to provide, which I'll give you a little vision of, to really narrow down and define some of those barriers that are getting in the way and that thoughtful people can work around or, you know, eliminate. So we do have a process of engagement that involves an audit to look at, to look at, you know, what is the experience of students? We look at test scores, we look at the transcripts of individuals. We have qualitative conversations through these focus groups, which I've mentioned. We have surveys and we look at master schedules, which are linchpins of opportunity and challenge. And we engage in community conversations, focus groups and presentations of this information to set the stage, like what is the clear picture of what's happening with students? And the next slide is a picture, we worked with Albor Unified School District and Riverside Unified School District two years ago. And this is their data, the way we present it, at an overall look, right? They have 29% of their students were eligible for A to G. And that's well below the state average as well. But they didn't know where they were getting most stuck, right? So what this graph shows is that in the dark green columns, that's where students are landing with their success rate in taking a course and getting an A, B, or C. So if you see 29%, it means 29% of all the seniors taking that full complement of 15 A to G courses made it with a grade of A, you know, A, B, or C. What the blue column shows you is all the kids that took the courses that they needed, but didn't necessarily get the grades to qualify them, A to G eligible. So there's a difference between sitting there bum in a seat in a class and having access and actually taking it versus passing it, right? And since we were talking about math today in particular, you can see, so it's the third set of columns. It's Subject C for mathematics, from going left to right. You can see that 66% of their students in the class of 2012 were taking all the requisite math courses they needed, all through Algebra II and beyond, 66%. And 50% of their total senior population were passing all those courses that they needed. So you wanna ask yourself, what's happening with the remaining 33, 34% of the kids who didn't even take the classes that they needed or passed them?
So really, the issue for the three middle ones is an access issue, not even taking the classes. And the issue, the other glaring issue for them is on English, that there are enough that are taking, but a tremendous that aren't. And so you've got an access issue and you've got a produce, there you go, a production.
An efficiency issue, right? If we wanna get it right. But so your ratio, so we would see schools that had great access, right? Everybody take your A to G class. Really low pass rates, right? We've seen that because there aren't the supports that they need. Oh, rigor, 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 but no support to help them. And then we've seen some places where very few kids get access to the A to G courses, but they do, a pretty good percent of them do really well because it's such a small, narrow group of folks. And what we're able to do in some of our analyses is show like, of all the kids who never, ever failed a class, what percent of them aren't A to G? Because they weren't taking the right classes. It wasn't an issue of motivation or study habits or will. It was an issue of access. And a board will sometimes tell me, I'll be sitting with the board and they'll say, well, all of our kids have access. They don't. They don't all have access if you don't place them in the courses to give them an opportunity to have the course. So access is an interesting concept in that way.
What was the percentage of those kids that were doing well, As and Bs in regular courses? Or not?
I can show you the slide. It was an astounding number. When we showed the data in the group, they were shocked. In Riverside, not Albor, but in Riverside in particular. So we can share with folks like, you know, you can see, not everybody's getting the math they need. Not everybody's getting the lab science they need. Not everybody's getting the language other than English, which is the world language. But there are some great subject areas where the access is pretty high. And so then your solutions to the problem are fitting the needs of the students when you get closer to what the real problem of access may be. And we're particularly concerned, as I know you are, and I've seen it in your LCAP and your strategic plan around equity based on race, ethnicity, language status, socioeconomic status, you know, parents' level of formal education. And so there are different variables that we look at because that first slide that I showed you was an aggregate across all students. But now we're gonna look at students coming from different race and ethnicity groups. And you can see clearly how much less access Latino and African-American students are getting to A to G courses in, this is still Albor's district, and then how disproportionately less well they're doing when they're taking those classes. And that's what I think the opportunity of the LCAP and LCFF funds are, you know, providing. Sometimes we would be able to present this problem and situation in a district with no opportunity to resource the supports needed to flip those bars or raise those bars. And now you're in a, you're in a, we're in an environment together where we can say, okay, kids who need more help can get more help. And we've identified who those students are. So most people know there's disparities between race and ethnic groups and access. What we can also get down to is at each school, are those same groups similarly or differently accessing courses in particular subject areas? So that, you know, if maybe one school's really doing well with their Latino students, but their African-American students are not getting the access they need. And sometimes it's reversed.
Have you looked at gender?
We can look at gender.
I would be interested in looking at gender within ethnic groups.
Yeah, we often find that Latino girls, for example, get less access to science courses and do less well.
And yet, in, I can remember academic courses at Montgomery back ten years, 15 years ago, it was two to one female.
Right.
So it's, it would be interesting to look at.
Well, I would just, these are just a couple of examples of the kinds of tools that we can put into your hands and into the conversation. The next one is really showing you, okay, of all the students who missed A to G eligibility by one single semester D grade, okay? They were, they were one semester D grade shy of A to G eligibility. In that class of 2012, there were 18 of those kids and they were not picked up. They were not on anyone's radar. And, you know, it's a small district. So if you would have rectified the situation for those 18 kids, their A to G access and success could have gone up, or their success rates could have gone up by a couple percentage points, right? In San Diego, 1,000 of these kids existed when we did their transcript evaluation analysis, 1,000. So being able to say, well, where, what subject areas is that the case mostly for? Maybe that's where in our master's schedule we should put the double intervention class, right? Maybe that's where it needs to happen. Look at English. English is the largest barrier here for kids. And in part because it's a four-year requirement, right? But in part because there's other things going on. So we wanna be able to put these kind of analytic tools in your toolkit. And by partnering with National Equity Project, also the tools of facilitated discourse around why we have the barriers that we have, what kind of conversation will help us address these in as constructively and supportive and equitably a way possible? And, you know, one thing that I know we've touched on is, it isn't just about taking the course that matters for your academic success in the future. It's about the quality of instruction and the cognitive demands that are being made in those classes. And so we have expanded our work to include an analysis of assignments, right? Class assignments where we can pose the questions to the community. We're not gonna do this like on our own in a room hidden off, scurried away, but actually engage the community in saying, what percent of our courses are, or what percent of our percent of our assignments are on grade level with a level of rigor that's going to make good on the promises for college and career-ready work? What's our baseline? Where do we expect to be? If we're not there, how do we address that? So we can raise, I think, a lot of important questions that help you get to the concrete what you're going to do next phase. So that is kind of the first step of what happens, and it moves into the blueprint for action phase where it could be a six-month, it could be a 12-month conversation, it all depends on the, you know, on you as a community about what are the concrete steps we want to take. So the next slide addresses those, and they come in various categories, you know, curriculum instruction, the safety nets we've talked a lot about, the student support that are necessary, English learners, special education, student populations, foster youth, right? Professional development, what are the professional development needs? We can't expect teachers to do what is a transformative experience without support and time to work collaboratively together. Nobody expects that. What does that structure look like, how are we going to get there? What kind of credentialing do we need? What kind of facilities do we need? Maybe we need more lab facilities than we've had. Have we done an inventory about that? Those kinds of things. And then getting, we feel like this is a real, a lot of what I've read in most LCAPs and your LCAP is a plan, you know, to spend some money on this issue, but not necessarily the level of detail of what's required. And this blueprint phase will fill in that gap for what you've asked of yourselves in the LCAP, right? Like, we're going to address this, we've got resources now. Okay, well, how? What are you going to do in particular?
That's the conversation at the site, and the community, and the parents. That's the conver, that's the conversation.
Yeah. I would also just offer that there are two levels that you'll continue actually having discourse and making decisions around, right? It's at your level, at the policy level, where you all are charged with supporting through policy, conditions that allow school sites to actually do the how, right? So earlier, when you all were questioning whether or not there's another step for this board to take before conversations and work actually went back out to the sites, I would just ask you to hope that there probably is, right? There's probably still some policy work such that you would be setting and creating conditions for people to actually go work through and create their own solutions about how to do that, with an understanding that what they know best, I mean, I love, I love this, the case study that was presented by Elsie, because that's what we've seen that in other districts that we've worked with too, and actually a district that probably is most closely related to yours in San Rafael, where the story that Assistant Principal Andy actually just told, was a very similar story at Davidson Middle School, which I would, I would, probably has very similar demographics and, and conditions in it. So that community actually figured out the how, right? Understanding that their children were actually differentially situated from the opportunity that they were trying to create for each and every one of their families, right? And so their how, that they had to kind of get in there and say, how are we going to actually deliver on this promise for all of our, to all of our families? And what did that mean we need to do? What structures do we need to create? What activities? However, they were doing that in a policy environment, right? That actually stated kind of where the bar was. So their board actually had an equity cap, their board actually set a bar and therefore allowed for a condition that they needed to actually go back in their communities and say, it's not whether or not we're actually going to provide an equitable education for each one of our families, it's how this community is going to do it for our children and our families. And so there's something there for, there is, there's work at both levels that's to be done, in order for the school communities to actually go back and figure out what's going to work and how it's going to work, given their capacity, given their, the talent available on their sites, given their children and where they're situated by those opportunities.
Any questions, comments before I move?
Well, I think there were comments over here about if you're going to talk about math.
Yeah, the item on the agenda says we're having a math discussion, and we've talked two-thirds of the time about A to G.
Right, great point. So if, I mean, I pointed out in particular math because that's where we see a considerable amount of barrier to access for A to G. When I think about what the Common Core standards have established as the floor for all kids, I think of Algebra II. The, you know, sort of the traditional, formerly, you know, known as math expectation is Algebra II. And what we are saying as a state, as a nation, as a community, is that all kids need to get to and through, you know, the Algebra II or equivalent, the integrated math set of standards by the end of your 11th grade year. What, what are we doing to make sure that happens? And so if, if we were to engage in the community and focus on that math challenge in particular as it related to, you know, access and success, I think people would be ready for those kinds of conversations. But it, it isn't just math that is the problem around, at the end of the day, you know, where, where are we headed in other subjects?
But math is, it's obviously critical. Even though it's A to G, when we talk about A to G, we're used, math becomes the stumbling block in someone's life.
It's a gatekeeper. You call it a gatekeeper. So when we look at, when we look at data and analysis, we can break it down even by, well, when did that course taking in the middle grade start for eighth graders and see over time, how did a cohort progress? Sometimes we have seen that even though a child has failed an Algebra I class in eighth grade, taken it again in ninth grade and failed it, taken it again in 10th grade and failed it, we can see that there have been no systematic interventions of retaking a course that tells the child that they're the problem, rather than the set of supports needed to help them, you know, access the information in a different way, in a, in a differently supported way. And so, I mean, that gets at, like, what does it mean for math intervention? That's going to look different than English Language Arts interventions or science interventions. And a lot, a lot of community discourse that I'm hearing around Common Core and math is about, well, you raised that, you know, so I feel like you're pretty attuned to people who are midstream right now, and there's a big change, how's it going to impact their child? What we would say on a policy level is, what is the board and the superintendent doing to ensure that a high percentage of courses are A to G approved? Is there a set of expectations, goals, human power around inventorying all the courses that you have, understanding how far off they are to getting approved by the UC regions? And, and, you know, what really is necessary? It might not be a heavy lift. If it's not, why not do it early? Or thinking about the default course structures, and we see this in science, in Eastside, they had most of their kids not taking Biology in ninth grade, and then realized that that was a thing that was getting in most kids' ways, and they changed the policy at the board level.
Actually, the audit kind of shared that. You know the story, the example of the student I mentioned? At his particular school, what the audit revealed was that the high school that you went to determined a lot, which you got placed in. And at this particular school, the science department had a belief that no one goes into Biology in ninth grade based on nothing. I mean, we asked, it's like, there's absolutely no evidence that there's any reason to do that. So if you happen to go to that school, regardless of your level, you're most likely placed in Integrated Science. If you went to another school, the audit showed that, we're having a discussion with the principals, you got placed in Biology. So the one was based strictly on a belief system that was based on nothing but a belief system.
I think for us, we can't have the mathematics discussion absent a discussion about equity. And I think that's why you hear them happening at the same time, because our questions, again, the state has adopted Common Core standards. So that's not, it's not really a discussion because we've adopted the state's standards. We're not saying that we're going to go against what the state, the question is, how many levels are we going to create? And we don't create them just in math, we create them everywhere, in every subject. And so the question is, are we going to stand by that and continue to justify that when we have data that shows it's actually damaging populations of students? Or are we going to, again, as a system and at a policy level, say we want different types of solutions for students? And I think, again, this is a discussion item, this isn't an action item, but I don't even know that I hear from the board that you're concerned about the data we presented around who's in regular and who's in academic classes at the, and only if you want to look at math. I mean, that is the question of the night is around this discussion. And you're seeing data that, that shows that we have students as ninth graders that won't go, that don't even have the chance to go to college unless they double up in a math course, which, I mean, nobody doubles up in a course which they could have already taken and passed. And so we have the question at the junior high level, again, I mean, how many layers are we going to have? And we have TOSAs like Brent in the back, and they're, I'm confident they're going to figure out for our district what that needs to look like, and with your kind of support, bring it back to you, you saying, yes, we need you, we need our experts to figure it out with the teachers, with all the teachers, with students, with their parents, with the experts in the math field. We need to figure out what that looks like, what that looks like right now, what that looks like in a transition plan over time. How long is that? Three years? Is that five years? They'll figure that out for us. They'll figure out which diagnostic tools tell us the most in terms of placement. I mean, we have some amazing teachers who have been on their own going to the project lead, you've heard about that, I mean, three years, five years, working with experts, really kind of deeply invested in these major shifts in the mathematical world. And so, I mean, I think what people hope to hear is that that's, that excites the board and that these changes are something that you're interested in hearing more about as they're discovered. And we don't have answers, and we are ensuring that teachers are part of kind of this solution finding process. And we know we need to educate parents. I mean, the world just really changed, you know? This isn't math class of old. And so we know that takes time as well. And Brent, I mean, I'm sure you're much more eloquent than I, so I'll let you speak.
I don't know that he wants to speak, I kind of force him to do it, but, but, but I think if you could address the shift of the steering committee from last year to this year, do you recognize it? Or is it just a figment of my management?
No, I think there has been a significant shift. I think they're, they're hearing that things can be different than the way it is, which, talk about belief systems, I think, in math especially, we've had this, that you have, the only sequence of courses you can take is, you know, what it's been for the last 10 years, you, you take it, and if you don't pass it, you fail it, and you take it again. And what I was thinking about in this last conversation, what I was hearing was, I see the need for professional development on how do we, I think as math teachers, we are very weak in how do we respond when students struggle? Because what we tend to do is take the class again, and we tell them the same thing again. We do, we tell them the same exact thing again with another teacher. So we're really not, there's no support for these students that struggle. So as teachers, we need to learn how to do that.
I think that's a class district, not just.
Oh, yeah. And you need the time and the materials and understand what other people are doing. I mean, yeah.
I mean, the, last year, the department chairs for math, it was pretty contentious, to be honest with you, about traditional, integrated, I'm not changing, I want to change, you know, Westside, Eastside, I mean, just every variable you can think of. Today, it was, this is what we need to implement the Common Core. We need a plan, and it needs to be three, five, or seven years, I don't know, we have to agree about that. That we agree that we're in a transition, that administrators understand that we're in a transition. You know, so accordingly, when you come into my classroom, you may see different things that they want, they believe that parent education is critical, and that the professional development is huge, that they want the support to be able to implement the Common Core, not just implement, but be able to teach kids in a way that the Common Core dictates. They, it's completely different than what was in the last year, in my opinion.
And I think they're feeling more freedom to try things. It's taken a year of trust to do that. So this year, I feel like they're...
Taken a year of what?
Of trust.
Trust.
So I do think, you can feel that's pretty impressive, so.
I want to, I want to say kind of about Socorro's. I sense that you sense somehow that the board isn't on board with this, and I'm not sure where that message is coming from. Because we passed a strategic plan and an LCAP, it's very clear. We said when we walked through the strategic plan that we were getting data that was saying the decision was being made for kids even before they entered the ninth grade, and there was nobody that was saying, well, that's okay. And we want to break that barrier, stop it, prevent that decision from being made for them, and allow the education process to take, that if they make a choice in ninth or 10th or 11th grade, that's a choice that's been made, and it's a comment, it's there. So I'm not sure what you're looking for from the board, because as far as I'm concerned, you've got, you've got the ability to move it forward, you're doing that, you're bringing folks along, it's going to take some time, there's a lot of education that needs to be done, there's a large commitment for professional development, and we need to be out in the community talking with folks. But I don't hear, we passed this, and so I'm not sure why, what more do you need from the board from that perspective? I mean, it is an action item.
No, no.
I want to just add on to that a little bit. I was under the impression it's just Common Core, and I do see a link here and so on. This is a very lengthy talk, we could go on for a very, very long time. We started this conversation a couple of years ago, it's going to continue. I'm not in a position to ask or advocate for any kind of policy at this time. I need, this needs to percolate back up from the sites. I need to hear what people have to say. We've done this, and we've talked about the whole LCAP, we talked about our strategic plan, talked about the easy part would be the, the why and what we're going to do. And we also discussed the idea that the real hard part was the work, how we're going to do it.
The how, which was being done by the...
And this is, this is where we are right now, because I am not convinced that there is a way to do it, and not, you know, policy from the board for me would be premature, probably in the near future. So I'm willing to continue the conversation, I'd like to connect the conversation to be broadened to the sites, so people can have a chance to talk about this, show them the statistics, have a conversation, you know, a reasonable conversation, you know, where you really are exchanging ideas and so on, and then we'll continue this, you know? I'll, you know, I'm excited to hear what people have to say after you present these statistics to them.
I don't think that we are making policy about what they're doing at the sites.
No, but there was, there was a discussion, Jen, that said, well, we should be having policy on this, that was, that was it.
Yeah, I'm not convinced what that is, because I think we already, I think we already passed the policy, I think we've already decided what it is.
And these guys are months, months in check.
We're asking for the how to be done, and the sites are doing that how.
Yeah.
You know, Elsie Allen's done exactly what they should do relative to the how and how it's worked, and so I'm not convinced that there's a...
Well, what I hear you saying, though, is that if a site decides there shouldn't be A through G classes, you don't have a problem with that. And I guess that is the policy level that, that we want to hear, because we want to bring back to you examples of policies that you could pass because you believe that sites can't make a decision at their level whether or not kids have the opportunity to go to college. Because you have said as a board, you believe all kids should be college and career-ready. But I still hear on the board, this discussion of, I'm not convinced, I hear that a lot, and I'm not sure, you're not convinced about, about what?
Look, I'm not not convinced, we have a majority of the board that is convinced that we need to move forward. That has been done, it's been said, move forward.
Right.
Do you disagree?
No, I agree, and I think that's what, I think that we need to be very specific about what the board is, and the board is the majority of the board, and that might be seven and that might be four. But the board passed a strategic plan that says, we want kids to be college and career-ready. And, and that means we can't be tracking kids out of college in eighth and ninth grade. And the board passed the LCAP that, that took community input, that included parents and students and teachers and administrators and people who lived down the street from school, and put all that together and said, we want our kids to have the opportunity to go to college if they want to, and we want our kids to have the opportunity to go to the JC, but take English 1A instead of English 50 whatever, you know?
And how that's done on a site-by-site basis is...
So, it's done, it's a district-wide decision, and that's, and so, this is a, this, I love a, I love a discussion, and I think we should have them all the time so we can understand what we're talking about, what we're saying to the community, but I don't want to keep having the same conversation over and over and over, that we voted on in public, in open session, and passed as action item and set as district policy. And that is that we want our kids to be college and career-
And that is that we want our kids to be college and career-ready, which means that in eighth grade and ninth grade, they can't be in classes that, that puts them out of that. Period.
So, may I ask then, so we're all clear? So the next step, particularly in math, because we have, there's conversations going on right now with our mathematics experts in our, who are our classroom teachers, about kind of what middle school math will, is going, needs to look like in the future and the transition plan. And so we talked about it last year, they're talking about it this year. It is like someone's, it's going to be a long conversation, there's not an immediate answer, and they're kind of, it ripples in, it ripples out, it, you know, talk to new experts, talk to different parents, you hear different things, and you think different ways. So what does the board need to stay informed about the work that the sites are doing, that the teachers are doing around this Common Core mathematics change, even just limiting it to that? What does being kept up to speed look like so they can do their work with confidence that the work they're doing stands and represents kind of what the board wanted to happen?
I, I think that the, the answer to that, do you want to?
Well, I want to get something clarified. I think we're not tracking students in the ninth grade, is that correct?
No, we are.
In English?
Yes. And I thought we were done.
I thought, I thought.
But having regular classes, they are tracked?
Right. Regular classes, that's a track.
But what I'm hearing here is that once in the ninth grade, they're all in the same level, then if they don't succeed with the support, you get all the support you can, and then if they, if it doesn't work, then they don't make the next level. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's going to have to be a decision, how you handle that's going to have to be a district decision.
But I've heard that mentioned.
Districts do it a different way, they have different, they have summer support systems, you can double up.
Right. But if a kid doesn't show up and, you know, isn't motivated to achieve it, then they can't go to the next, that, that next A to G.
I mean, they could with support. Again, this is, to me, the question that, I have to get your name.
Brent.
Brent brought up. So I have two sons who are math teachers secondary level. The issue that he brought up is the key to the success of Common Core, is the professional development of how you deal with this issue right now of the heterogeneity, particularly in math. And I think it's, it's, it's a critical issue, and districts are solving it in different ways. The first issue, though, is to deal with the access issue for those who do belong in there. That's number one. And then you deal with the support systems.
Okay. What I'm hearing about math is that these, the people who are having this discussion, the math leaders at Common Core and the government, is saying that they're ready to move forward?
They did. They, the middle school has gone from multiple tracks in seventh and eighth grade to two each, to two, to seventh and to eighth as a transition, which was very courageous and a huge, huge jump for all five middle schools.
Well, I've also heard you tell me about math training. You think that all teachers in math should have the training. And this, to me, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that's.
And I think the, if, if they want it, I mean, I would think they would.
They, no, they do. That was one of the things that they, they want.
And I think that's, that's the policy you might want to hear. I'm not really ready to talk about Common Core when it refers to all other subjects, you know, whether we just, I think you need to have conversations leading to it as to implementation of A to G into ninth grade. I mean, I think it's a very complex subject to.
Well, and math is the one that's the most visible in its change, right? Because it's called something different, it's, it's like seismic. Whereas in English, it's just still English nine, it's still, like, nobody's like, oh my God, what? But this, even the names are changed, so it gets, people don't understand it, it's a whole new level of education for everybody.
You know, you know, especially when we called everybody over, a discussion that was kind of starting up, you know, some of the key areas, you know, planning, opportunities, options, inspiration, student empowerment, parent engagement, so we have a full parent portal, so all these different activities, parents will be able to log in, they won't be able to change anything or direct anything, just view not do. So going back to 11th, 12th grade, we have a full college search system within the platform, they can see all the various different options that are available to them, they have a full database of scholarships, you know, something that.
You know how to get a lot into a short amount of time.
I try, I try. I've been doing this for a while.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think, I think, yeah, that's good, that's good. So Brent, talk about the parent minutes, just for a little bit. Brent, again, as you didn't hear, is our TOSA at San Rosa Middle School. He's actually sharing the position part with, with Boras part, and Brent has part, and they are doing fantastic work at the site, and this, this young man, even beyond to the district, so.
So the, the kind of the goal of the, of the math nights was to give parents an idea of what it feels like to be in a Common Core classroom, and how to take that experience and learn how to help their children when they come home with assignments or something that they need help on, how to keep the Common Core alive in the home without doing the math for the students. But how do you, what's the habits of mind that the parents could have and engage the students in to help them with their studies? The theme behind it. So we're teaching math with parents.
And who are you doing that with?
We're doing that with Carol Redner and Rachel Lehrer.
How many pairs?
We don't know yet, it's coming. It's an all-out buy to the district. And the dates are 16th, 16th.
September 16th, September 23rd, September 30th. They're signing up online registration. We'll put it on the website. Also, a flyer is going to all the sites where they can pick up a document in the office and fill it out. And we're going to be able to calculate the childcare needs, the translation needs. It's going to be a big thank.
So it wouldn't be fair if I didn't give Vanessa two seconds to say something from Innovator.
So the work that we've been doing with the sites is really, you know, that heavy lifting, right? You can set policy, you can look at all the data, but unless the key players that have to implement and really talk the talk and walk the walk, it's really difficult because change is difficult, many people don't want to change. That's really happening with the school leadership team, as well as the principals, so that they can really carry out and build capacity at their sites, the goals of the district. Because it all ends up back at the school sites anyway, right? Their data filters into your data. It is your data. So just working with them around the metrics, hitting hard on that, so it's great to hear all the work and support that's already coming around that, but really having that process to articulate and access that data, interpret the data, and then do something about it is a really big part. And another piece that we are working with the district on is the work that's called, what we call the Integrated Student Support, where now that you have the data, what are you going to do? Right? So then we get to the intervention conversation. What are the counselors going to be asked to do? What are the teachers going to be asked to do? What are the parents going to be asked to do? And those are all decisions that have to happen at the school site. But every school site has their own set of data, so they make the best choices for their schools. So that's the great part about the collaboration, but everyone's still in the same process, making the best decisions for their constituents and obviously the students. So that's, you know, that's hard work, but it's the, the fruitful work.
So I think you've seen that we wanted to present this in a way that it was woven together, that it wasn't different pieces all over the place, but that we are looking at this systemic, systematically about how do we support every single piece, part of our edgy system in order for our students to, in order for us to meet the goals that we have set for our students. And so I appreciate very much, it's been a long night, there's been a lot of information, but what I really appreciate is the discussion that happened tonight amongst the board. I, I, I really do. I know, I really appreciate it, and I, I want it to continue. I want us to continue to have these somewhat difficult conversations and get to the heart of what it is we need to do at Santa Rosa City Schools. So, thank you.
Okay. It's 8:30, and everybody can go home.